Good evening. I'd like to call to work in the formal City Council meeting for March 20, 2022. If you will stand through the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence, if you will keep your prayers on the friends of the United States.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Presenting the conditions of the approval of the minutes, lastly, the approval of the March 8th regular meeting minutes and the March 8th work session minutes. You have those or have a chance to glance at throughout your motion to approve.
General.
Do I hear a second?
Good.
Motion promptly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
I am going to make a motion. I'll make an amended motion to make adjustment on the meeting minutes for the regular session on March 8th for the new business session. The item number one. I'm sorry. For the item number two. And in council can vote no because the contract were provided to the council a little bit more than twenty-four hours. Council will not inform to really do the vote. And also for the item number three, four, and five, add the comments for related to the whole term of the tax operation and the. And or whatever tax operation and compliance service. Council can vote no for all three items because the contract never been provided to her.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion promptly seconded on the amended motion. Do I hear it is approved? All those in favor say aye. Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Nate?
Nate.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think I listened to before the approval of the world session meeting minutes for the meeting on March 8th. There was a lot of discussion during the world session and it's not recorded in the world session meeting minutes. And the meeting minutes were just provided to us five minutes before the meeting. We didn't have a chance to proof what being recorded if we missing any discussed report.
Let's go ahead and defer the work session and that's my fault. I couldn't check about and I didn't know that until around six o'clock. I know there's nothing like that. So that's on me. Awards of presentation, recertification award from the Georgia Association Chief of Police.
Good evening. I need to shut the room. I'm the coordinator of the state certification program for Georgia. And it's my honor to be here tonight to present the Marl Police Department, their recertification. This is a three-year process they've been working on. It's not an easy task to do. It's not something that we give away at GCP. It's something that an agency has to earn. So it's a it's a big deal. And as the leaders of the community, you should be very proud of this department that they have accomplished this. As y'all know, the last few years, law enforcement's been getting, we're been getting beaten up around the country. You watch the news, you see a lot of negative comments, a lot of negative things going on about law enforcement. And to be honest with you, some of it is our own fault, you know, but there's no doubt about it. But the majority of it is not our fault. It's just bad information. Sometimes it's the media, sometimes it's just some outspoken groups in a particular community. But overall, law enforcement agencies are very professional and they take their job very seriously. This program has one hundred and forty-one standards in it that cover nine different areas of law enforcement. And they have to meet all the applicable standards that apply to this agency, which is probably about one hundred and thirty standards, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and thirty standards they have to meet. Not only do they have to have policies and procedures in place that deal with all those standards, they have to train their employees, make sure the employees are doing what they're supposed to do. And as as the leaders of the community, it should be important to you that they, their policies and procedures are written in accordance with state standards. The officers and the employees are trained in those policies and procedures. The training has been documented because if it wasn't documented, it didn't happen. And then if something happens, if when, not when, but if they, not if, but when they get sued, because they're going to get sued eventually, we all know that, that's going to happen. But if all of those things are met, the chances of somebody beating the city and the department in lawsuits, almost zero. So that should should be something you're very proud, you should be very proud of. And if you get your your liability protections from GMA through the Georgia Justice Association, then you get a twenty percent discount on your liability premiums because of them being state certified. So that more than pays for the cost of this program. And it could be a significant amount of money for the city. So it is my honor as the coordinator of the program to present Chief. Here's your plaque for three years, assigned by the governor. Also, my boss, Litch Harris, who's the president, the executive director of Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police, and also the president of Georgia Sheriff's Association, and then Janet Moon, who's the president of the Georgia Chiefs and also the chair of the Georgia Youth Committee. And so congratulations to you, thank you, Chuck. And certification is a department-wide effort. It can't be done by one person. It can't be done by the chief. It has to be, everybody in the department has to buy into it for this to be a successful program. Because this is something they have to live and breathe every single day. This is not, they get a plaque and hang it on the wall, don't worry about it anymore. This is something they have to do every every day so that they come to work. There has to be one person, though, in the department besides the chief that has to pull all this together, has to do all the work, all the legwork, making sure all the documentation's there so that when the assessors come in, they can see, not only the agencies saying they're doing it, they're proving they're doing it. That has to be done every three years. So it's a continuous cycle. Like tomorrow, they start over if they haven't already started for the next three-year cycle. The person that does that is the certification manager. That's the person that's chosen by the chief to be the person that pulls all this together. And it takes a special kind of person to be able to do this. I know, I used to do it. And it's not an easy job, but so this is to Sergeant Adam Smith. Gratitude for your dedication and efforts to the state of Georgia Law Enforcement Certification Program as the certification manager.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. One more thing before I I'll be finished. I brought each of you a small gift. I had a coin made up last year that on one side has the state certification logo. On the other side is what I consider the six main cornerstones of what this program is all about. And if you think about what the six are, this is what you want your law enforcement agency to do. You want professionalism, you want operational guidance, positive community support, because without the community, they couldn't do anything. Transparency, we all hear that's a buzzword in law enforcement, but we want to be transparent about what we're doing. Ethical conduct, obviously, that's that's something that's hugely important. And then liability protection. So if you think of those six areas, those are what this department is working towards every single day that they come to work. That's that's going to be paramount in their minds and because they owe it to you as the leaders of the community, they owe it to the citizens of Marl to be the best they can do. So.
And so as Chuck mentioned, the this process involves about one hundred and thirty standards that apply to our police department. Each of those have sub-standards, so we're really talking around three or four hundred individual items of documentation. That has to be produced triannually, so three different years. So now we've got a thousand pieces of documentation to produce every time we're inspected. This is a significant accomplishment. And so in addition to the recognition by the Georgia Chiefs, the Marl Police Department would like to recognize Sergeant Brad Smith and Major Greg Tetro, who were responsible for overseeing this, gathering all of that documentation, presenting it in two separate assessments, which ultimately culminated in our recertification tonight. So the department commendation says this, for their outstanding achievement by managing the triennial inspection and recertification by the Georgia Law Enforcement Certification Program, a division of the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police, which brings exceptional credit to the Marl Police Department and involves performance significantly and above their routine assignment. Sergeant Brad Smith and Major Greg Tetro are hereby awarded the department commend, the departmental commendation by the City of Marl Police Department this twenty-second day of March, 2022.
He actually did a better job than I did last week or two weeks ago with his presentation, but I'm I'm glad that we're able to come up here and show you all the great things that the department is doing. I made a promise to the council and I made a promise to the City of Marl and citizens that we were going to get this back on the map. We are. This is a part of it. It's a part of delivering that. It's transactional and it's for the benefit of everyone. So I'm I'm humbled and I'm also very, very happy that we were able to accomplish this, but we can't do it by ourselves. I can just sit up here and smile, be the face of it, but there's a lot of lot of folks that are over there at Murphy Drive that are pushing forward to realize the vision and mission of the department and to bring the quality and level of police services that other parts of the city enjoy down here to a place like Marl. I love you guys very much. Thank you very much. And I'm not leaving. I gotta go anywhere. I got a couple more things.
Swearing, couple of new officers.
All right. So, good news. As of April 11th, the City of Marl Police Department will be fully staffed. You're going to be two of them tonight. You're going to be two of them tonight. Officer Dewey Wing, who's already in service, come on up, sir. Officer Nicholas Kirk. Going to tell you a little about about themselves. But just real quick, Officer Wing is from the City of Marl, just like a lot of us here.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This was unexpected. My name is Dewey Wing. I came to the United States in 2002. I've lived here in twenty years. I attended all the school, Marl Middle, Marl High, Plain State. And ever since I was little, I always wanted to become a police officer. I wanted to be somebody that people can depend on and call on. And what's better than to serve and to protect my community? That's all.
How's everyone doing tonight? Me too, me too. So I'm Officer Kirby. Recently, I started law enforcement at Lake City Police Department and was at Clay County Sheriff's Office for a short time and now I'm supposed to be at Marl Police Department. As somebody who thinks about this department, I just really happy to be here and help make a difference in the community.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm going to read this and just follow it.
Yes, sir.
I, Dewey Wing.
I, Dewey Wing.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will well and duly demean myself to the faithful discharge and performance of the office of police officer.
That I will.
Well and duly.
That well endure.
Truly demean myself to the faithful.
To redemean myself to the faithful.
Discharge and performance.
Discharge and performance.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I I have been appointed.
In accordance with the charter.
In accordance with the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of Marl.
Of the City of Marl.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I am qualified to hold said office.
That I am qualified to hold said office.
And I do not hold any office.
And I do not hold any office.
Of trust under the government.
Of trust under the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The State of Georgia.
The State of Georgia.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign states.
To which by laws of Georgia.
To which by law of Georgia.
I am prohibited from holding.
That I am prohibited from holding.
I am not the holder of.
I am not the holder of.
Any unaccounted for public monies.
Any unaccounted public money.
Due to the City of Marl.
Due to the City of Marl.
And I will support.
And I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and law.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Georgia.
And the State of Georgia.
Congratulations.
If any family wants to come up and take pictures with Officer Webb.
Somebody got picture?
Hey, ask, ask the orange to take a picture of us, Nate. Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
I'll send it to you.
Yeah, come on. Yeah, come on.
One, two, three.
You get a chief, you already heard it one time. I, Nicholas Kirk.
I, Nicholas Kirby.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Demean myself.
Demean myself.
For the faithful discharge.
For the faithful discharge.
And performance.
And performance.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
In accordance with the charter.
In accordance with the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of Marl.
Of the City of Marl.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I am qualified to hold said office.
That I am qualified to hold said office.
And I do not hold any office.
And I do not hold any office.
Of trust under the government.
Of trust under the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The State of Georgia.
State of Georgia.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
By which laws of Georgia.
By which laws of Georgia.
I am prohibited from holding.
I am prohibited from holding.
I am not the holder of.
I am not the holder of.
Any unaccounted for public monies.
Any unaccounted for public money.
Due to the City of Marl.
Due to the City of Marl.
And will support and defend.
And will support and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Georgia.
And the State of Georgia.
Congratulations, Mr. Sir.
Of course. Put the pressure on me to pin it.
Yes, sir.
Payback for you putting the pressure on him to speak.
Well, he's kind of swollen too. I didn't want to hurt him.
New business, approval of the Radified Public Session, the approved agreement and agreements between the City of Marl and Georgia Power in the amount totaling forty-five thousand dollars and the execute, or authorized the married executive agreement and other related documents. And we're going to ask that that those be submitted as exhibit eight and that they become part of the public record. I've stated earlier, the City of Marl has already approved that. This was just asked to prove to the record specifically based on two properties that were not the City of Marl property. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Several.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye. Ms. Nate?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Question carries now, so. Item two, approval of staff recommendation. You got a motion for the approval of staff recommendation or proposal to provide equipment and public works in amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and authorized the married executive proposal and other related documents. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Several.
Do I hear a second? Motion promptly seconded, all those in favor, Ms. Nate?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Question carries now, so.
Mr. Mayor, before you call for this motion, the third motion. For setting up the salary, is there any document that the mayor have to sign?
I'm sorry, which one?
For the item number three, for approval for staff recommendation, is there any documents that the mayor have to sign?
No, ma'am. It's just an approval of positions.
Yeah, then still may I please take off to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on the company offer.
We had a recommendation from the Public Works Department to three additional employees, specifically in this case for sanitation, after twenty-four, and to assist with sanitation and other duties to the city. This would be adding three additional staff members. We'd have discussions. Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion promptly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Open to discussing?
Sir, discussion.
I just want to clarify, are they three position in the budget?
I'm sorry.
Are they three position in the budget?
No, ma'am. That's why I bring them to you all to peruse.
Okay. So do us a favor at the approval, please go to the council and let, or to the member on to change the impact of this.
Sir.
Thank you.
Motion promptly seconded, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Motion carries now, so. Item number four, approval of staff recommendation, create a full-time public safety mechanic position starting at grade forty to help preserve, maintain the maintenance fleet and equitable resources in the city. Item number forty, do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion promptly seconded, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Nate?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
And Ms. Qua? Question carries now, so. Approval of the planning and zoning board, staff recommendations, approve the final plaque with the following stipulations of address nineteen hundred Mount Zapparid, parcel easement where is indicated clearly marked and minimum twenty-five feet. Address is corrected by adding the suite indicated nineteen oh five, seat Mount Zapparid, and the fire marshal slash fire chief, a previous easement as provided on the plaque and the authorized executive area and other related documents. Item number forty, do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion promptly seconded, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Nate?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Question carries. Second reading of an ordinance, twenty twenty-two oh four, fire cave, making some changes that are recommended by the fire department. This is the second reading. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Several.
Do I hear a second? Motion promptly seconded, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Nate?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
And Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Question carries now, so. Come back with a piece of, but general comments or questions from the office.
Yes. To the new public work director, I understand what you're trying to do. You can't have a fleet unless you have fleet managers. And the most important thing that you said is, hey, you're going to automate it. And that's going to save a lot of money for the city in the near future. So God, well done.
Other comments? Ms. Quinn?
Yes, I would like to say thank you, everyone, for having the evolution day that we had, the Black History Month. It's really nice. And I love the concert and the variety of dancing. So thank you again for hosting such a nice event for the city.
I would like to, what a great job you guys did at the St. Patrick's Day weekend. Through the trucks, the zip line, I love watching Dorothy fly down. It was a lot of fun. It was a wonderful day. The vendors worked great, you know, so thank you for putting that on for us.
All right. Other comments?
I want to thank the mayor and those who helped organize the roundtable today. It was informative and very interesting. Thank you.
Other comments? Comments for the council? Ms. Tran?
I just want to say I appreciate the direction that we are picking up momentum to move forward in it. It will take the support of citizens and residents remaining active and engaged, but there's a great deal of things on the horizon and we're just excited as a city to kind of move things forward in a fresh new direction. So I appreciate where we are and I appreciate the residents and citizens that continue to stay engaged.
Ms. Tran?
I have two comments to make. The first one is the, from the relation on the police department to, to the certificate, the certification. And the second comment is that the agenda package got to the council at eleven o'clock PM on Friday night. And then the revise came a quick while of Saturday PM. And this is a concern to the management. We cannot have put the staff working under that circumstance like that. And especially the staff just have lost three family members. We need to do a better job in time management because council meeting affects schedule. It's not a surprise and nothing to be rushed. The better time management will be appreciated.
Ms. Qua?
I feel that I'm, I'm very happy to see that I have things happening and especially glad to see that I have the certification for the chief police and also that I have the. And also, uh, I'm glad that we, uh, we hired a few new police officers that are homegrown. And what I hope that, um, one of them is going tomorrow and go ahead and swear a word and all will want to come back here. Whether the type of haircut, the tone of voice, that's the one he's about. And then the other person, they're from locally too, so, you know, from Lake City. That means something to me, um, people out there want to join our city. So I did, yeah, to see good things happening in our city. So I'm very proud of that. Yeah, the new public work director Brandon, he put a, a new program to work. Uh, I haven't seen that for a long time. A lot, a lot of things need to be in place to run a good department and, um, we actually have to thank him.
Ms. Tran?
A couple of short comments. Um, number one, um, I've had discussions with the people regarding, um, the excitement that they feel that is generated and has been created, um, with the city. Um, people are feeling that there is something moving forward, there's some progression and, and they want to be part, a part of it. So I would like to extend that to, to the citizens that are not engaged right now. Let's get engaged. Um, I'm going to be out there with my little pickup things and my bags, picking up trash where I, wherever I see it. I'd like to start a campaign. Um, I was speaking with, um, Stephanie from the Reynolds Nature Preserve. Uh, trash is a problem. Trash is a problem. And hopefully, you know, with, um, Brandon, we can, um, do something that's going to clean our city up and put it back to what we are accustomed to because this trash is not Marlboro. Um, there are some things that have, you know, been let go, you know, we didn't get to. We want to, we want people to drive down the city, the streets and say, wow, that's, that's nice, you know? Or, oh, I like what they've done over there, you know? I want to hear those types of comments instead of what's happening tomorrow, you know? So I think we're, we're feeling that, we see that. And, um, I would just like to say that, um, we, we have the Reynolds Nature Preserve. We have a completed pathway system. And yes, I am going to join the Birdwatchers Society and bring it here tomorrow. And, and, and hopefully we get some people who haven't been comfortable walking on the pathway. We can start a walking group to get out of the house, you know? The pandemic has finally let go a little bit of us and, and we can reconnect, you know, with, with, with the citizens. And hopefully, um, people over there wearing the badges will see us on the pathway and stuff and make sure that we're safe and, you know, we can enjoy what we've, you know, been looking forward to. Also, I'd like to say that to the mayor. Thank you, um, for exhibiting the leadership that we need for right now, uh, the projects that we have going forward. It's been a long time coming. And I'm finally happy to see Marlboro's moving forward. That's it. And I saw Mr. Collins going like this, so I couldn't.
I have no comments. Meeting adjourned and the work session is running, so I did you good.